Thank you for being here. First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Jean and her staff for letting us come to the five facilities here. I know it's busy time and we appreciate you all letting us call in. We like to get out to the schools every year and this is our third one, so we appreciate it very much. Okay, board members, you've got the copies of agenda. If you have, let me know if you have any additions or additions or need change or whatever. And if not, I'll let you take a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, next item, our agenda, please allege allegiance. Everyone please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, in Israel, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Okay, next slide, board members, you have the October 13th board minutes that have been previously sent to you. Hope you had a chance to look them over. If not, do so. Have a motion to approve the minutes last meeting. You have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, next item, we have the October disbursements and others sent to you today. Have a motion to approve the disbursements last month.
Second.
Have a second? Any questions? May I? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you very much. Moving on, we'll give a principal report, Dr. Stiles.
Well, unfortunately, my student hasn't gotten here yet, so I'm not sure.
He wants to just come back?
Yes.
We'll do that. Big pleasure. Ms. Jean?
Hi, Ms. Maddie Seals, that's going to present to you guys this evening. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Madeline Seals and I'm the Beta Club Secretary. I would like to take a minute and recognize our Beta Club as they are getting ready to participate in a virtual leadership summit. We have three amazing teams who will be competing for a chance to go to Nationals, which will be held in Walt Disney World. These teams include Rapid Response, Lead Outside the Box, and Service Snapshot. The members from the Rapid Response team include Vincent Rellender, Madeline Seals, Kason Martinez, Hannah Martin, and Lucy Hobel. This team is required to participate in high abstract problem-solving memory skills. This task was mailed to them and it requires students to complete a challenge in a certain time limit. The next team is Lead Outside the Box. These members for this team include Ryland Bradley, Jack Fincher, Isabel Owens, Elena Sheridan, Livy Wright, Sarah Bradford, Lucy Phillips, Eli Hester, Grace Sheer Ostege, Haley Sanders, and Brola Hawke. This team will be required to create an interactive survival skill for their peers. This plan was created because of the pandemic. It includes the school's attendance policy and extracurricular policies. It also includes a parent section and will be available for the 2020-2021 school year. The last team is Service Snapshot. These members include Kaylee Gross, Gavin Stubblefield, Garrett McHenry, Aleah Gentry, and Tiaja Ewing. This team requires a mission to identify and design a new service project. They are currently working on setting up hand sanitizer stations around public transport areas in Fayetteville. This will take place on November 4th and 5th. Good luck to everyone participating. We would also like to recognize Will Petty as he was selected as a leadership representative. He was involved in a virtual interview for a position as a leadership representative. Unfortunately, he was not chosen, but he did very well for a first-time participant. We would like to recognize our Rapid Response team and our Lead Outside the Box team as they qualified last year to go to Nationals, which would have been held in Houston, Texas, but due to COVID-19, they were not able to go. Our Beta Club members also sold boot bags for Halloween for a fundraiser. In November, we will be collecting non-perishable food items for Junior's House. They are also starting to prepare for state, which will be held in Nashville in February of 2021. They will be competing for a variety of competitions at the Opryland Hotel. We would like to thank Ms. Wendy Butler for her time and dedication to the Beta Club. Thank you for your time and I hope that you have a great rest of your evening. As I conclude, FMS would like to thank Ms. Edie and Ms. Rayby for their time served as board members. You will be missed and we wish you all very well.
Good job. Good job.
Maddie is also our eighth grade class president as well as the secretary for Beta Club, and that was all her presentation, right? She did it all on her own. It was a good job.
Very well done.
Great job. Is the convention where you're going to be virtual or how is that?
I think they're waiting for that to be determined, so.
Go back. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
All right, can I have him here, Mr. Coleman, here?
He is not, but he has some representation.
Good afternoon and thank you for having us here tonight. We are so thankful for your continuous support throughout the years, especially this year given the unique circumstances. I'm Carly Wakefield and with me is Jekala Small, and we are both FFA officers. This year looks a lot different for our FFA chapter. We miss being able to travel, compete, attend conventions and conferences. However, we've been focusing on ways to still be active. This year, Tennessee FFA became affiliated, which means all students enrolled in agriculture class are automatically an FFA member. We are now one of the largest clubs in the school with 84 members. So far this year, we have had our annual offer to retreat multiple chapter meetings into successful fundraisers selling buns and fresh corn. We are currently planning our second chapter, our next chapter meeting and preparing for our first competition, the State Poetry Contest, which will be this Thursday held virtually. One of our favorite events each year is our Tennessee State FFA Convention, which takes place in Gatlinburg. We work hard every year to build leadership skills, gain agricultural knowledge, and compete for a chance to go to Nationals. As of now, state convention is scheduled to take place in Gatlinburg with all safety precautions in place. However, that could change. We are very hopeful that we will have the opportunity to attend future FFA events and we want to thank everyone again for their support of the Fayetteville City FFA. We currently have exciting news this afternoon that we might be able to travel and compete this January. Thank you.
Eighty-four members now? Wow. Great to have you.
Thank you.
We'll just.
You've got anything?
Sorry.
We'll come back if you want to come back.
He had made some posters and was going to, like, there were pictures of what we've been doing at the school, so I may just have to have it come the next time. I don't know what happened.
That'll be fine. That'll be fine, Dr. Stiles. So happens.
Okay.
Shows up.
Okay.
We're very flexible.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, yes, ma'am. All right, we'll move on to supervisor reports. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. I want to thank Mr. Hopkins. He was able to take myself and a few members of the administration to Morgan County schools and show some of the facilities that he'd worked with during his tenure down there. I've had a great opportunity to see a lot of neat things, lots of possibilities. It was, I found it to be a really positive and enjoyable experience and appreciated. With our facilities, I want to make the board aware, I think a couple of you were with us as we, the facilities committee was with us as we toured the campus, one of the portable buildings flooded. There was a water line break. We've had that issue happen in the past with one of those, and it flooded the FFA Agriculture Room. That room, we've gone through the process to have the adjusters come out, look at it. It's repairable. We've had difficulty finding someone to take the job, but got good news today. A company that's actually the company that's in the flooring in the building, and those of you building administrators will realize that they did a really good job installing that, they're going to take the project on and begin work as early as tomorrow. So I don't know how long the project will take. A lot of it will depend on how much damage to the wood subfloor is there, but we hope to have that fixed, you know, before Thanksgiving and have everything ready to roll after that. For transportation, the buses are crowded, but everything's functional and going pretty smoothly and all is, all is well under the circumstance. So we hope that will remain the same and are encouraged that it will be. And I'll be happy to, if any of you have questions, I'll be happy to try and answer any of those, but that's the conclusion of my report.
I did tell them that we have a meeting with Mr. Plunkett.
Yes, a meeting with any Thursday at 8:30, I believe, or is it tomorrow at 8:30? It's something like that. We do have it this week.
Where we're going to discuss the facilities?
Trying to figure out what the city code will allow and will not allow. We're looking at adjustment for some facilities that.
It's actually tomorrow.
Tomorrow, 8:30. So he'll be meeting with us and hopefully, early indications are that he wants to help us anyway.
I'm sorry if that works out.
Ms. Chairman, we also have a facilities committee meeting this Friday, so that'll be a great follow-up to your meeting with Mr. Plunkett.
Signed seats on the buses, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. The assigned seats.
Working okay?
It is. The regular bus are out, sir, no problem whatsoever. If a bus drives out and you're trying to play, it's nothing but catch up and the assigned seats are there, but then you've got, you know, an overflow from another bus, so, but it's going well.
I know the numbers have increased, whatever, if I'm sure.
It's daunting.
Yeah. Any other questions, Mr. Jones? Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Ms. Dotson?
So, a couple of things I want to make you aware of. We had a meeting this past week. Appreciate Mr. Jones going and Ms. Wright. Of course, Mr. Forman wasn't able to be there, but it worked great. We were at the TCAT satellite, which is here in Lincoln County, the Lincoln Center. They have positions that are open in the industrial maintenance program, which will begin in January. So right now, we're looking at the high school interest level, finding students that are interested, and then transitioning those students in January so they can get in that program. The advantages are, you're not on a waiting list. Once you're in that program now, then you can go all the way through summer and then in the fall, and you get to be in that site. So as those positions fill up, you don't have to drive 30 minutes to Shoville. Mr. Jones had our opportunity to say, as did I, we have some former graduates from our school that will be graduating in April in the industrial maintenance program, and that's a huge deal for one of these students. Both these students are minority students. One of these students in particular, you know, we're, we should be in the business of changing the trajectory of families and generations after that. And one of these students, that's going to happen. And that one individual is a female, and so there are going to be people that are already clamoring to hire that individual for a job at a variety of places. So that's a big deal. Also, we've been working on within the CTE, we utilize some funds to make sure that, for example, cosmetology students, even those on virtual, we want them to accumulate their hours for their cosmetology lessons. So we purchased extra mannequins. Brian's done a fantastic job of doing virtual where they video themselves and other things so that they get the same or as close to the same experiences on virtual that they would in the classroom. And as we possibly, everybody were to ever transition to that, we've got those things put in place. Another exciting thing is, always super proud of Tanya Bradford, looking at Tanya getting her unmanned drone license, and we actually have funds for that, but also we have a couple of students. And so I have a line item in some federal funds that we're going to utilize for those two students to potentially test for and get their unmanned drone pilot license. So, and again, she's got plenty of drones, so if you'd ever like to come and look at them. They're pretty impressive.
Yeah.
Unmanned drone license. Didn't know there was such an.
It's called an unmanned pilot deal for drones.
Ms. Chairman, one of the additional losses of COVID-19 canceling is that Ms. Bradford and some of her students were actually going to take those drones and do a project demonstration for the leadership at TSBA, and of course, when that got canceled, that wasn't going to happen. But they were going to be one of the featured presentations on that project at the annual leadership conference. Hate that didn't happen.
That'd be very interesting.
But they'll, they'll be even better at it when we get them on the next agenda, so.
Any other questions, Ms. Dotson? Thank you, Ms. Dotson. Mr. Keven?
Been still working on clinging up data from our transition, and we made it through report cards, which was a great thing. That first time you do those is usually very difficult. We'd had to design a report card, and teachers did a fantastic job with that, and administrators did a great job. I want to try to encourage parents to utilize our online portal that we have through Skyward so they're able to track grades and communicate with teachers and do some of that. So we're going to be sending out some more communication about that through social media. And I brought tonight, Mr. Hopkins mentioned last board meeting about our transcript and what it had looked like, so I brought a copy. I used my son's because I didn't want to have anybody's information out there, and I okayed this one to me. So Black Dad is great and everything, but this is what our transcript looks like now. And a lot of time was put into this to get this set up, and I'm real proud of this, and this will be what we send out to colleges. And I want to let you see a copy of that, kind of see how that, how that lays out and what it looks like. And we're always tweaking it, and there's ways we can go in and add more things to it, but just to give you a general idea of what we're doing as far as that goes right now. And I can't send up good things about the teachers and the administrators and all that they do at the buildings. With the new program and how hard they worked with helping me try to get errors corrected and cleaned up, and we've come a long, long way. We've still got a ways to go, but it's getting better every single day, and I couldn't be happier with the progress we've made, so.
Any other questions, Ms. Keven?
Should we surrender these back since that's got some personal information on it?
You can if you like. That's fine. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
What did it used to look like, two or three pages?
It was, but near this nice look.
Yeah, it's not so fancy.
No. No, this looks a whole lot better. We added the school logo and some different things to this that we weren't able to do before, so.
It's very nice.
Steve's put a lot of time into it, a lot of late hours.
All of that.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Teague?
All of our school improvement plans, all three schools' plans are approved right now, so the school administrators and the teams did a lot of hard work on that. Also, last year, we had a federal programs monitoring, IDA and S.R. programs were monitored, which involved uploading documents and some interviews and visits and things like that. So that monitoring is currently closed. We've been found compliant on everything, which is great news. We had great compliments about our people and their knowledge and the fact that, you know, we put kids first and make decisions based on really what's best for kids, particularly at FMS, I'll write on them, the people and the knowledge they have is highly complimented, so we're excited that that is closed.
All right. Very good. Any other questions, Ms. Teague? Thank you, Ms. Teague. Ms. Young?
I have two things. We have been able to schedule a literacy academy for our teachers on January 5th. We are very fortunate to have a presenter that just left the classroom, so she's bringing a lot of classroom experience to the training. And the teachers will leave with a notebook of strategies to use in the classroom the next day. And all of this is going to be based around the science of reading, which aligns with our new textbooks, our new reading textbooks. Excited about that. We will host that at First Baptist Church so we can social distance, and it will be for all of our teachers that teach reading K through 12. The second thing I have is, we have been working with a company, Health Connect America, and we are in the final stages of creating a MOU with them. They will provide a counselor. We will start with one counselor that will serve all three schools for mental health issues. As we, as the caseload grows, they will provide one at each school. I have, this will be gone through the counselors at our buildings. All three counselors met with the company two Fridays ago and very excited to have the support from somebody that has the knowledge to help our children with all the mental health issues that they have. Ashley Townsend will be our liaison with Health Connect. She actually works with the local judiciary system, and so if a parent is in the court system, then if the judge wants help for the children, she can help get that for them as well. Referrals will come through the teachers, to the guidance counselor, and the counselor and principal will make that referral to Health Connect. And it is our, they're right now in search of someone to hire that will be the therapist just for Fayetteville City schools. There was a lady moving here from Arizona that was actually living, I think on Third Avenue is where they were planning to move, and I don't know if that one's going to work out or not, because they go through extensive background checks before they let them come to our schools. But our goal is to have that in place by January 1, that they can start serving kids in our school building. Just another service for our children. And like I said, the guidance counselors are very excited about having that extra support.
That's one. Very, very much needed, I'm sure.
And I didn't say it, but it is at no cost to us. That is very important that we provide those services, but also have to be cognizant of our, what it costs us as a district. Is she, where are her offices? She be like contracted in and out, or does she have an office? We will provide a space, a private space in the building. Each school will determine where that will be. They won't actually have an office at the school. They will have a space. Their only requirement is that we provide them internet access, and that's not going to be an issue at all. And so we're excited about that partnership. They currently serve Wayne, Lawrence, and Giles County, and so very fortunate to have them willing to expand their range a little bit and encompass Fayetteville City schools. I mean, a contract, like it, you have a certain length of time they're going to serve, which is year to year? No, it's, it'll be until we, until we discontinue it. As long as there are children with needs, they will be here to help us. Thank you. And if you have questions and you don't think about tonight, just call me. We've spent a lot of hours with them, Mr. Hopkins. So if you have any questions, just give me a call, and if I can't answer it, I will send it to Ashley and she will get back with you. They're very responsive.
Very good. Any other questions, Ms. Young? Thank you, Ms. Young. We'll move on to reports from committees, facilities, transportation, I'll move first.
Just that we've, we're going to continue our, we have another meeting on Friday, and I think it's to do a walk-around at Askins, right? That's what we were missing out on.
Yeah, we're going to do some.
Among other things.
Askins, and then we're going to kind of throw some stuff up on the board, kind of figure that out.
Yeah, cool.
All right, we move on to the finance committee. We've got one, one item, budget amendment on school nutrition. It's $10,900 adjustment that's here to grant through no kid hungry share or strength to be used for this insulated delivery bag of seven dollars. I don't know if anybody else can speak to that pretty straightforward, so I make the motion to approve Budget Amendment Number One on School Nutrition for fiscal year 2021.
Sir.
Have a second. Any discussion?
Other than Ms. Hall worked very hard to get that. She's done a really good job, you know, working to get that for our children. Good job.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you very much. That's all we have on the main. We'll talk again. Okay. Move on to insurance policy, and I know we've got some policies for annual review that have been sent out for everybody.
Yes, we have policies for our younger students. 4.1, 4.110 is 4.805 for your consideration. And I'd like to make a motion that we, that this is our first meeting.
Are these all on annual reviews, Ms. Jones?
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, we have. Have a motion to approve the policies for annual review.
No changes. Excuse me, did I give you the wrong ones?
No. No, here's 4.100, 4.805.
3.100.
It's a 3.100, okay. So good.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. I had, I was down to the other part. Okay, so it's 3.100 through.
4.805.
Right.
Okay.
4.805, yes, I'm sorry for that mistake.
That's fine. So good. We have a motion to approve. I hear it, sir.
Second, sir.
Have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you very much. That's all you have on insurance policy. Thank you all. All right, Mr. Hopkins?
I'd like to ask that we approve a change of our schedule, that we do remote Wednesdays for the remainder of the first semester, starting on the 11th.
And we've previously done this.
We have previously done that. We stopped, but due to the large amount of students that we feel are fixing to transition back into remote, and due to the ones we have now, we're going to need that for our remote students and to help our teachers, so we're going to go have those days. I'd like to approve that, a change to the calendar.
Just a quick, quick question.
Yeah.
I don't think this is going to be an issue in the COVID era, but that is Veterans Day.
It is.
We would normally have a big throwdown, but I assume we're not doing a big throwdown in the COVID era.
That is correct. We did discuss that, and that was a discussion that we were not already going to have anything.
Yeah.
It was going to be virtual, what we were going to do anyway.
Yeah.
So, but yes, that's a good question, and we did think about that.
Yeah.
It's another casualty to COVID.
That's right. That's right.
Mr. Hopkins, they are working on a virtual program, the media class at the high school.
Okay, so we will have something, it just can be done.
Yeah.
Virtual.
Yes.
Beginning the 11th.
Beginning the 11th, yes. And that would be a total of five, I think there's five Wednesdays left, so that kind of gets them a week.
End of semester, too.
End of semester.
I make a motion to approve that calendar change. Anywhere in the day?
Have a motion.
All second.
Have a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
I want to make sure, January the 4th, we do have a board meeting. We don't think there's going to be a reason to change that, do we? No, I actually, we have someone coming in, I said the science of reading on the 5th, and I thought that I would set up something so we could do a little presentation on that on the 4th, and so it would, you know, I want to arrange it around their schedule, and I wouldn't want them to have to come in on the 4th, because, you know, for some reason we'd change it. I don't see any reason we would, but I want to make note of that.
No, I don't know. We'll go with it.
That's good. That's all I have, Chairman.
All righty, I've got a couple items. First, we want to appreciate our director of students, which is our superintendent with everybody, we have two great ones we love. And we have a resolution for board approval to designate November the 12th, 2020, for Superintendent Appreciation Day in our Fayetteville City school system, and we want that. And we have a resolution for board approval, the designated November the 12th, 2020, for superintendent appreciation day in our Fayette City school system. And we want to acknowledge them and appreciate them for all they have done and all they do and continue to do. So I did entertain a motion to approve this resolution that has been sent to you.
Go on.
Second.
I have a motion of second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And I think our directors and superintendents realize how much we really appreciate all your hard work and what you do every day. In this environment, it's that much more difficult, but we thank you for all you do. I hope that day's fun for you. I imagine it will be. From what I understand, I think it will be. All right, so, yeah. On behalf of the board, I just wanted to welcome your students and a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great to have you. Also, too, on behalf of the board, and I told Ms. Hopkins this, I don't know if we said enough, but our people, staff, administrators, teachers, janitors, everybody, all the employees. On behalf of the board, we just want to thank you all for all that you do and you continue to do to keep everyone safe, children, the teachers, all the staff. I know these are trying times, but I don't think we can say thank you enough, but just on behalf of the board, I want to get, tell you all, thank you very much. We really appreciate all you do, and we're here to support it, everything that you do. So thank you, everyone knows that, but I just want to say thank you. We're covering, thanks for making. Just a couple of things, elections tomorrow, and good luck to all the candidates. Good luck tomorrow and going forward to the results. Everyone, go vote if you hadn't voted. And the last thing I have, I just want to tell Ms. Jones and Ms. Sarah, on behalf of the board, I just want to say it's been an honor serving you two, fine lady. The perspective that she brings to this board and has brought to this board over the years as former teachers, well, as educators, she's a former teacher, that perspective is invaluable. And all that we do, and all the policies we write, everything we talk about, it's wonderful, and we totally agree with you. Just wanted to say, I'd like to give you all the best wishes.
Thank you.
Best wishes.
Thank you.
That's all I have, unless somebody else has got something?
No.
Oh, thank you.
Well, I, I just wanted to thank Mr. Hopkins. I know he's stayed quite busy with social media informing the public of all the COVID, sadly, of all the COVID-19 developments here in our school system. I think that transparency is huge to our community. I mean, it becomes, it's daunting when you notice how many tweets and Instagram posts you see about another case. But I think it, I think, number one, it's important that that is that transparent to the community. And frankly, this is a problem that we're dealing with in our community. And maybe, maybe those, all those notifications are serving to make sure the public understands the gravity of the situation that, that their school system is, is dealing with. And so I just want to say thank you. That is, you know, nobody likes to see that when it comes out because it means something else has happened. But I think it also demonstrates to the public the meticulous way we are attending to keeping the Tiger family safe. And so for, I'll echo the chairman's words, everyone's efforts. This is, I cannot imagine in the schools, in the classrooms, what a daunting task it is every day to try to do some, as much social distancing and keeping people separate and accounted for so that contact tracing even has meaning when some notification comes about. So I just can't thank folks enough for all they're doing. I do note that our numbers are rising, and, and so we're, had you all talked earlier about any notification about, to the, to the public about trying to encourage families to go virtual or any, were we going to?
We did talk a bit in the work session.
Okay.
But I will be glad to redo that. Again, what we're going to do is we're going to tweak our little announcement that we've looked at tomorrow. I'm going to do a video tomorrow, and we're going to release some encouragement of all of our students that if they're capable and can, that we wish that they would transition into virtual learning. That way, it will make it easier to social distance. And the key to it is we want to be able to continue to have traditional school for the ones that need traditional school. The last thing we want to do is transition into completely remote or virtual learning, where we know that there's going to be a 25% of student body that's not going to be successful in that way. And if we can have the ones that will be successful in a virtual world, we're going to encourage them to do that. But again, what I think's most exciting about Fayette City is that we're going to allow the parent, we've given the parents a choice. And the parents are going to be able to make a decision for what they feel is best with their child, and we support whatever that is. And not only do we support it in word, we're supporting it in action by being able to do that. Thus, the remote Wednesdays are huge that y'all approved because that's going to give us an opportunity for those students that do decide to go to remote or virtual learning, that, you know, we're going to dedicate a day directly to them. And that, that's absolutely huge. But we're looking at some options. We, we're kind of going day by day. The thing that will really, excuse me, that will shut our schools down will be when our faculty and staff cannot maintain enough there to have school. But as long as that we can have a faculty and staff available, we're, we are committed to having traditional school in some form because students need it. And so that's, that's kind of going to be our commitment. But we're going to look at it and evaluate it day to day, not week to week, but day to day. And we could be coming out some more announcements if this doesn't work. So we hope that everyone buys in and helps us out. And I'll, I'll release the video sometime tomorrow.
Yeah.
And we'll release a statement announcing the remote days and the encouragement.
Yeah. So, I mean, I hear this, you know, parents saying, well, what can I do to help at a time like this? I mean, I think what we're going to ask, right, is what you can do to help is if your family can do effective virtual learning, you have Wi-Fi, you have the ability to have childcare at home, and not every family does. I fully recognize that. But if your family can, we're asking you to please do that for this, the rest of this semester, right?
That is correct.
And we're also waiving any, I assume we're going to waive any option that if you go virtual, because we've said in the past, well, if you go virtual, you stay there the whole semester. We're waiving any of that, I assume.
We are, but we're going to ask them to work with us. We don't want any panic amongst the teachers. That the fact that they will just kind of jump back in whenever, back and forth, it's going to be one of those things where work with us case by case, but yes, we're not going to hold them head, said fast. And we kind of changed that as win anyway.
Sure.
So I think the key to it, and Chris, I know you can help us with this, put stuff out. I want to thank the Alt Valley Times, too. They're very good, they're, they've been a partner with us, getting that information out, and I think that that's key. They help us with these kind of things, you know, you can use that very positively. But that we want to make sure that whatever it is, we're going to work with every parent individually. We don't want to put anybody in any group in a box of like, you're virtual, just, you know, you're traditional, whatever it takes, we're going to do.
Right, right. Well, I think what, one of the things that we all think is special about this school system is that we have a family environment relationship among parents and, and staff. And, and this is really a time where we're asking families, if you, if you can, please do this because by doing that, you're helping another Tiger to be able to stay where he or she can learn most effectively. So, so thanks, thanks for organizing and helping.
Great job by the staff today. Like I said, we met for well over, maybe an hour and a half this morning, trying to iron a few things out. And I met individually with the administrators, I went to their schools and talked to them. And we still have a few things we want to do before we issue the release because we also want to make sure that our teachers are notified prior to this so they know exactly what's going on. And they don't have to read it from, or, you know, get it from social media. We'd like for them to know what's going on.
Can I say one thing before y'all close up?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, one thing that Jase was going to talk about, and he, I don't know what's happened to his family. I need to check on them, but we are having a basket auction. We, Ralph Askins has teamed up with Van Massey Auction, Van Maxi Auction House. And we didn't get to do our Tiger tracks at the end of last year. That's our big money-making project, and that didn't occur. So we're short on the dough, you know, at the school. So we don't have the sports and athletic events that they have that can pull in money. So anyway, we've teamed up, there are six huge, and I'm not talking little small basket, these are huge baskets, a vintage old truck on an old piece of wood with all kinds of goodies. They are all themed, they're going to be a lot of fun. We're going to be posting different things on our Facebook page to encourage that. But anyway, these are some flyers about it, I'm going to leave here, but it starts this Friday. The viewing starts where you can bid, and then it will end on November 12th. So this is a great chance to get some really great gifts. I mean, this, these are some neat gifts, so.
And they can come by and see it.
Yes, you can go view it, not at our school, it's now at the auction house, and we are on table nine. So Van, Van Massey's done us a big favor, they're not charging us for this, so we'll get to bring home whatever we make off of that. So the teachers decided on that, and we, our parents have been great to support us in that, so we're hoping to bring in some money for our school. And they'll be, we'll be doing it throughout the year too, because there are six big old baskets.
This is just the beginning.
This is just the beginning, yes.
Good idea.
Yeah, really is. All right, everybody say everything? Same journey.
We off then?